Okay, let's call the Delaware County Commissioner meeting to order. It's Monday, June 15, 2020 times 9:00 a.m. Let's all stand for this place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Regan? Freda? Mr. King?
Here.
Here.
Okay, we're going to table business.
I get...
Ordinance 2020 dash 002.
I make a motion to remove from table.
Oh, second.
We have a motion to remove that from the table. Roll call, please.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce ordinance 2020 dash 002 adoption.
Oh, second.
So we have an introduction.
Actually, it's already been introduced, but this is ready for adoption.
Adoption.
You had your public hearing on it a while ago.
Okay, we have a motion in second to adopt. You want to discuss it?
Yeah, this is a tough call. Finances are short everywhere. But when I found out about a year ago that we still have 30 timber bridges that are out in the county, and if we don't do the maintenance, they're just going to be popping like it's been popping, so we've got to stop it.
So I agree with Sherri. I would like this money to be used for rehab. And Angie, we've kind of talked about that. You can maybe develop another line item for rehab purposes for these bridges. Okay.
Can we say rehab slash maintenance? Would that be sufficient?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, we have a motion in second. Roll call, please.
But before you go, just a f' why on the procedure.
Okay.
With this adoption, you're only setting the maximum rate. You're not setting the actual rate itself because the rate is actually set by the council during their budget hearings. So this is what you give, this would, basically, you're giving the council a tool to decide to go up to that rate if they want to. They don't have to, but they, that's what, you set the rate, that one, you set the maximum rate, and the council establishes what the actual rate is at their budget time.
002.
So I just wanted, do you have a...
Yes.
Perspective?
Okay.
Thanks. 002. I agree.
Okay, yeah, we have a motion in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Thank you. Approval of minutes, June 1st, 2020.
Question.
Second.
A motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. King?
Yes. Yes. Okay, presentations, contracts, and agreements for approval. Kathy with questions?
Good morning. I am Kathy, and I am from Ashland, Landscirve, here at 325 West Washington Street, Mountain, Indiana. We have five different flats that have already gone through the flats committee, and we have, on each one of these five flats that we're bringing to you today, we have a little bit of road frontage that we need to dedicate to the county commissioners. So one is going to be on Nevo, another one is on 5100 East. The next one should be on 525 West. And then one's on 350 North, and the last one's on Whitney Road. You'll see several of them in there.
You know, I have to get my medifying.
No, they're signing, huh? I know, sorry.
But it sounds like a lot of activity up in the county, which is good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
King. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is BIS agreements for the courts. Emily?
Morning, Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. There are three contracts I need to sign. The one contract for $1,105, that's, all of these are related to our Zoom hearings. So in order to capture the Zoom hearings in a better quality, BIS can capture that stream, the audio directly through the BIS recording equipment, so we have to purchase the software to do that. So this is what all of these are related to. So the first one for the $1,005 is for 40 court. The second one for, well, I don't know which one order you have yours in, but there's one for 5,730. That's for juvenile court and all five circuit courts. And then there's one for 4,292. This is also to purchase a traveling recording equipment. We've talked about doing off-site jury selection, so we need to purchase some kind of traveling recording, recording equipment along with capturing the stream for Zoom. So we're actually asking for these to be signed, because we need this purpose.
This traveling equipment, when you're finished with it, would it be, because I was thinking you were talking about maybe the Heartland, using the Heartland, would that be sufficient for them to maybe use it or?
So we plan on keeping it and using it for other things. We may use Heartland Hall, may use City Core, there's other things we can use it for, mental health hearings, having to go to the hospital and having hearings, we have that recording equipment. And we're purchasing the minimum right now. We're purchasing, it's a daisy chain system, and we can add to that system, so we're purchasing the minimum and see if we can get away with just that. So we might have to come back and purchase another microphone or another speaker, it just depends. So we're just purchasing the minimum to see what we can get away with.
The court's asked funds for this, correct?
Yeah, we're taking out of our funds that we have currently. We're hoping to get reimbursed.
Okay.
We appreciate that.
Yep.
Any questions?
I move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Permanent stormwater easement?
Joe Retsch.
John, you, can you?
The town of Delville is doing a stormwater improvement project, and this needs, they need an easement from the county. It's a narrow strip of land that the county is providing to the town of Delville for their stormwater project. This is an odd-shaped property the county has, and it's going for their stormwater project.
Yeah, we can see it off of that one, off the railroad.
Yeah, it looks like it's off the railroad.
Yes.
What's your pleasure?
I move for adoption.
Second.
A motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. Henry?
Yes. Bridge number 501, Cowan Road over McCree.
Commissioners, this is for a net zero supplemental. The current floodway permit has expired, and I need to renew it, and I intend to apply for a community passing matching grant to rehab the bridge on Cowan Road over McCree. It takes about five months, five to six months to get approval. I'd like to get this started as soon as possible.
What's that, going to letting?
Well, I, it could be fall or early spring. I like to at least get it out late fall, early winter, just hopefully we'll get better bid prices.
And then would it start next?
Spring.
Next spring.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that, is that going to have a sidewalk ended or a bike path or one side?
Well, redevelopment commission is planning for that bike path.
Okay, next is the EFCO, Paul Singleton.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a piece of software to update what we have. Currently, what we have was sold by two companies that went into partnership. Those companies have now split, so neither of them can sell the piece of software we have now. So this is a replacement. What this does is, when we get a medical call, the dispatcher's put in, like a symptom, stroke, for example, and then it takes them through the questions that they need to ask and prepare to dispatch a unit. And also with this, we will also now be able to certify the police and fire dispatchers the same as we do the emergency medical dispatchers. It has those three protocols that are in this software, too. So it's an upgrade to this, it'll get us up to industry standards. It's one of the two or three major pieces of software that most dispatch centers use around the nation.
And it's $20,000, is that correct?
Maximum of 23, I believe, John, was that what the contract was? And that money will come out of my 466 state lease.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve service agreement in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. Henry?
Yes. Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
John, was there any update with the company about the contract with the question?
Yes, they, they will, they won't pay with advance. They, they're willing to alter that, so we're working on altering that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next, Jeff Stanley, Sheriff's Department.
Morning Commissioners, Jeff Stanley, Chief W. Sheriff's Office. Recently, I was contacted by Chief James Turner with the Eaton Police Department, and they're having vehicle issues with their department, and he asked if we had any vehicles that we would be willing to give them. So we do have a 2010 Dodge Charger that's currently sitting. It's got a newer motor in it, however, it's got some front-end issues, and he's willing to take on the cost of fixing that to make it road moving, if we could donate that vehicle to the Eaton Police Department.
I think that, right now?
Yes, one government, I need another one.
I make a motion that we donate a surplus vehicle to the Eaton Police Department.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thanks, Jeff.
Jeff, while you're there, you know, James and I, and Sherri, all the Commissioners, announced what happened in Minneapolis last meeting, and we've been getting emails that we not said anything, or anything, and I think the people that were here in the meeting heard what we said. So that, it's upsetting that people act like we've not commented on it or not said anything about it. And Jeff, I've talked to the sheriff, and we've talked about policies and procedures and whatnot, and I know those are probably going to change for, for all the departments. Can you elaborate on anything right now?
Sure. So we've actually, the sheriff and I discussed that we're going to take our current standard operating procedures, our SOPs, and we are going to, we're going to look at hiring a firm to go through them. We just discussed this last week in Bloomington at the Indiana Sheriff's Association Conference, and this is one of the big hot topics right now, obviously. So there's a, there's a firm that will look at our SOPs, make sure they're up to standard, and if they have any suggestions or whatever, then, you know, we may, may or may not change them. But, you know, we're continuously looking at them to make sure that they're up to today's standards. Things are always changing, as we can imagine, so we're trying to stay ahead of the curve.
Absolutely.
We haven't had any problems with Sheriff's Department, and we, knock on wood, hopefully that continues. You know, our guys are still being very professional, and then overall in Muncie, Delaware County, we haven't had any problems, and they're doing a very fantastic, they're doing a fantastic job of protest and being peaceful, and we appreciate it.
Regan?
Jeff, while you're here, maybe this is a good time to discuss it. I know that just hiring the right person for any job nowadays is tough, but give us some, you know, what you're looking for in a police officer.
Well, I mean, and that is the problem, you know, we've been, Sheriff Skinner's been in office now, going on a year and a half, and we've already, just in that year and a half, we've had two hiring application processes, which is somewhat unheard of, because our application process is good for two years. And so in this year and a half, we've already had two processes, just because we're not getting the number of applicants, we're not getting quality of applicants. You know, we can attribute that to many things, but we can leave that for, you know, another discussion. But, you know, we're, we're looking for the most professional person that we can get, and, you know, after doing background checks, and after doing interviews and what have you, we're getting a handful, but we're not getting as many as we want, and we're not getting the diverse applications that we're looking for, you know, we're looking for. So it's a problem, but, you know, and we're, right now, we're competing with Ball State, we're competing, competing with Muncie Police Department, and all the other departments around, everybody's going through this. It's not just Delaware County, it's nationwide. And so, you know, when we're all hired at the same time, and we're all fighting for the same candidates, obviously, one's going to probably have the better paycheck and best benefits, it's going to win, so we'll, we'll take what we can get.
And when they go down to the law enforcement academy, is that where they kind of can weed out people that aren't mentally ready for it, or?
They can, yes, but that, that's, that's mainly our job as administration to, to try to hire the best candidate. I mean, when they go down to the academy, there's obviously state mandates that they have to be trained on, and state mandates that they have to be, you know, pass the test and the physical test and what have you. You know, if they don't pass there, then obviously, yes, they get weeded out. But if there are problem potential employees at the academy, those instructors do contact us and let us know that, and then it's up to us whether we want to keep them or not.
And when I became a commissioner, one of the first years, I believe it was, I was very proud to learn about the CIT, I'm just getting academics mixed up, but it's citizen, where they're trained to look for the mental health and the, you know, use in the home when they go. And how are we doing on mandating that every candidate, and even the 911, EMS, everybody in public services, not able to go, but it's just a good, I think it's like a week course update?
Are you talking about, like, middle of training?
Yeah.
Well, you know...
Well, that's, there's another one, but this was a CIT, the NAMI, the mental health folks, they, they push it big time.
I guess I'm not 100% familiar with it.
I don't know, maybe it's called CTI, but I think it's CIT. Yeah, it's, just when a call comes in, how you can assess it, you get there, see if someone used to go to the hospital instead of jail.
Well, I mean, ultimately, jail's the last place we want somebody to go.
Right.
And, you know, we do have things in the works that we are looking for a mental health partner, especially when we move to the new facility, so, you know, we're hoping that that may come to fruition. Mental health is, it's a major problem, and, you know, a lot of the, a lot of inmates that are currently housed have some sort of mental health problem, and, you know, they, they need proper help instead of being incarcerated to jail.
Yeah. When I was working in the Auditor's Office about 15 years ago, I asked, I was in a conversation with a couple of judges, and, and I said, what percent would you say is, back then I said drugs, and one spoke up, said alcohol, and they thought it was like 80 to 85% of the population, some type of addiction, mental health, any, any kind of addiction.
Sure, I would concur to that. I think a lot of the inmates, substance abuse is, is a major problem.
Yeah, but...
Thank you, Jeff.
Appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the emergency declaration 2020 dash 12, John, you want to talk about any changes on that?
Well, what I did basically was follow the governor's Phase 4 plan, looked at that. The governor did extend the health emergency to July 4, and I think as executive order 20 dash 30 and 31. And so what I did was I looked at his back-on-track plan and kind of incorporated the important parts into your emergency declaration, so you're tracking that. The public can start entering the county building under suit and rules and regulations. They have to maintain social distance at all times. Members of the public and employees are encouraged to wear a face mask, covering one's mouth, nose during times in the county building. Still encouraging people to wear masks when they do visit retail businesses. Those that are 65 and other high-risk conditions should continue to social distance and be cautious at work in their communities. Residents that have symptoms are, be mindful and be encouraged to be tested, and I also note that the state health department is testing anybody that wants to test out at their location out in the armory. They've moved to that, allowing social gatherings up to 250 people, that sort of thing. So those Stage 4 guidelines are incorporated into your emergency declaration.
Thank you. It was the pleasure of the Commissioners.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve the declaration 2020 dash 12 in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. Henry?
Yes. Energy incentive agreement, John?
Yes. The construction of the jail, I was working with a contractor on an energy incentive agreement. There are certain things that, when they put in the electrical systems and lights and whatnot, as well as the gas, there are certain incentives that both energy providers have for people that do that sort of work. And the electrical INM, AEP, whatever they're called, has up to about $150,000 in cash, rebates and incentives back to the county, and Vectren has up to $100,000. So what I negotiated with the contractor, since they're the ones that have all the serial numbers, and they're, they're real specific on what they need, I've talked to Aaron Clark and others at the, the energy provider, they're real specific what they need. The contractor will pull this up together, we'll submit it, and then the rebates that come will be split for their time, 35% for the contractor, 65% for the, for the county. So it could be a potential of about $100,000.
Very good.
Some of that would come back and go into county general, then we'd have to...
If it's for the, whatever utilities you've been paying us now, again.
It also can be negotiated on the price of the construction, too.
Thanks for working on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Thank you, John. Ordinance for second reading, ordinance number 2020 dash 006, an ordinance to amend an ordinance regulating traffic on certain public streets in Delaware County.
This is the ordinance to weigh limits on, I think, kind of road 400 South, you did the public hearing on last meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 2020 dash 006 in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Angie, how soon will signs go up, Roland?
Actually, my sign tech came in today, worked for her, and I asked her to go ahead and get the locates issued and marked, so hopefully in the next week or so, we'll have some signs, and I'll also let the state know if this was approved.
And didn't you say the state police were going to assist her?
The state will help put up some signage along their jurisdiction, but they wanted us to pass something formally before they put up their signs.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance for first reading, ordinance number 2020 dash 007, ordinance permitting Title IV, Chapter 1 of Delaware County Code regarding the Building Code Ordinance and Adoption of Regulations by Reference. Marta?
Marta Moody, Executive Director for the Plant Commission, which also includes the Building Commissioner Department in operation, and this is, this is an amendment that will allow us to always be up to date with state code. We operate under state building codes, mechanical codes, plumbing codes, electrical codes, and through the state Fire and Building Safety Commission, they are constantly looking at those codes and making changes, and we did an amendment last year to, you know, because there had been a change at the state level. This is just a way to say that we are adopting those codes, and as they change, our adoption by reference continues. What we will do is, on our, on the website, we'll list the specific codes, like it'll say, you know, the Indiana Building Code version 2014 based on the International Building Code version 2012, whatever it is. We'll keep the specific listing on the website, so if people want to know, you know, plus as major amendments come out, we've always tried to put them on the website, so that people within the different trade disciplines know what we've adopted. So this is just a way to keep it constantly up to date and to prevent having to come in front of you every time the state makes a change, so.
They're constantly revising these codes, whether it's the NFPA or the International Building Code, every three years. I think they keep themselves jobs, but anyway. Then it takes a state about another year afterwards, because I've sat on one of these committees, the Building Code, it takes about a year to go through the code and, and make the Indiana adoptions and changes, so by that time, but it's a constant cycle, and they're not all in the same year either. Some of them are, you know, there's different codes coming up every year.
All right, what's your pleasure?
We're going to talk.
Introduce?
Oh, introduce, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
First reading.
We have a motion to introduce ordinance 2020 dash 007 in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Angie?
Thank you. Okay, resolutions for approval, resolution number 2020 dash 020, resolution Delaware County and Indiana Board of Commissioners identifying certain properties to be transferred to nonprofits.
There are properties that have been requested by nonprofit entities to be transferred over to them, this is the process. Once you adopt this resolution, then we will publish, or have published in the newspaper, the request for a public hearing, you'll have your public hearing at the July 6 meeting for the non-profits to come in and, and make the request for these properties.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution 2020 dash 020.
Second.
A motion to approve in a second. This is 1,000 block of West 8 Streets, 649 North Madison, 1339 East Main Street, 900 block of South Mound, 1300 block of West 8. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. Henry?
Yes. Thank you.
Two of the properties requested by East Central Indiana Regional Planting District, Ross Community Center had two, and Muncie Home Ownership and Revitalization had requested one.
Very good. Okay, department head or elected officials? Okay, we have payment of claims, $3,332,255,96.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve claims in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Okay, we have two people signed up to speak. Okay, we have two people signed up, this is Cameron Grubbs, the first one.
Thank you, Cameron Grubbs, 400 West Fifth Street. Well, one, I don't know if y'all were aware of this part or not, but is there a reason why we're not live streaming at the moment? The...
As I told you, that's your permission to decide. That's, we just didn't have a speed.
Okay. The, but I was here to ask, what is the county doing? I'm one of those people asking the questions, what the plan is. I appreciate, you know, Deputy O'Neal over here, you know, kind of going through what's going on. My curiosity and my concern is that this stuff isn't being communicated to the community. It's not like, when these meetings are being made, what's being done. Also, I know both of you happen to sit on your, your town marshal or police chief or whatever. After Minnesota, you know, there was a large outcry, and I'd like to know what the county is planning to do. Like, why is there not been a statement from the county, something against racism in general, against police brutality? I know Commissioner King said that those officers shouldn't have done that, but there's been nothing that's come out from any of you personally, or personally?
We both announced that in the last meeting.
I watched, I kind of don't remember you really saying much. The, Mr. King did, though, but that's all. But then he's sitting here in a Blue Lives Matter mask, which is problematic, because if you're going to sit there and say that you stand with Black Lives Matters, you did in the paper, and then you're going to show up at the Commissioners' meeting in a Blue Lives Matter mask, you kind of see the hypocrisy that shows. It's problematic. And so I would just like to ask what the county is planning to do in order to communicate with the community.
Okay. Mr. Grubbs, and this is election year, and I really don't care about election win/lose. I really don't care in upstate. That before a long time, in my past, even while I was on the council, Donna can probably tell you, when we did budget hearings, I made cuts, because it needed to be done. I come from a very diverse family, okay? And I want you to understand this, and I want everybody that watches this to understand this. I have biracial family, I have Latino family, I have American-Somalian family. My family is very diverse, okay? I cannot sit here and tell you that one life matters more to me than any of them.
But that's the thing, nobody's saying any of the Black Lives Matter.
I don't see, I don't see black, white, orange, yellow.
You should, though. That's their skin color.
No, I don't. I see good, I see evil.
That's their skin. They can't take that off.
I see good, and I see evil. I don't want to focus on if a person is this color, if a person is that color, if a person is in law enforcement, if a person is in manufacturing, if a person is in EMS. I look at the person. That's what we need to start looking at, the person. And if you want to talk, I was probably the first law enforcement, small-town law enforcement agent in Delaware County, agency in Delaware County, that has hired other races, if that's what you want to talk about, okay? I don't look at somebody because of their color, I look at that person. I look at the heart that that guy has or woman has beating in their chest. Are they good? Are they evil? And when you want to talk about law enforcement, I have never had a complaint on myself. I treat people the way I want to be treated. If I make a traffic stop, I treat people the way I want my family to be treated if they're stopped by somebody, okay? That's how I teach my officers. If I have a problem within my ranks at my department, I do the steps that I have to to terminate that person before it comes to what you are talking about in Minneapolis, because you have to look at those people. One of the problems is, is some of these people that would have left my department, they go to a bigger department, okay? When they go to a bigger department, they get in trouble there, too. I get my phone call. The only thing I can say is if I would hire back or not. Do you understand?
Yeah.
You know?
But that's because of what, though? I mean, is that a state thing? Is that a union thing? What can be done to kind of...
Then it needs to, right, you have, like, you know, Donnie Wright, you know Sue Arrington. Stuff needs to start there, at the State House.
Why can't it start here?
To change things.
Why can't it start here?
Well, as a law enforcement officer that runs his department, it starts with me. And that's the reason why I'm telling you, if I had a bad, bad eight in my department,
Right.
they're gone, but then they just move on. You heard, we've, I talked to the sheriff this week. We've been discussing policies and procedures and rules. There is things happening here.
Okay, what are they?
I just told you.
But why can't they be put out, if they were talked about last week or this week? Why, I mean, why, why do it take so long? We talked about transparency, and like, Mr. King said last week, we're transparent here. But there's very little that comes across social media, there's very little that comes across on the website.
I'm not like you, I don't post a lot on social media.
Unless it's an election.
I'm just, I'm just not going to do that. And, Mr. Grubbs, that's, that's fine. We're done. You had your three minutes.
Time is expired. Time is expired.
He got to sit there and pollinate.
Mr. Grubbs, you're up, sit down.
Don't like what you hear. You did it.
No, I'm not going to be attacked.
It's not an attack on the...
Michelle Owen?
Hi, Michelle Owen, I'm at the Jefferson's. I'd just like to follow that up and ask when we can expect an official statement requiring, just regarding transparency and police accountability.
Well, first of all, the Commissioners are not in charge of the police departments. They have their, they have their own jobs as police departments, and I think you just heard the transparency in the Delville Police Department and the Albany Police Department. It's up to the sheriff's office, who's in charge of the police officers, to issue those statements and go through their, their rules and regulations, what they just told you that they were going to do. It's not, this isn't something that's posted on social media, this, but this is something that is going on. And the Commissioners made a point to bring it up at this particular meeting that the sheriff's office is going through those policies and procedures right now and will change those policies and procedures as they deem appropriate.
I was very, very glad to hear officers, officers in the family talk about some of those things. I think those are excellent concrete action plans. I'm very glad that those conversations are happening. But as a citizen, this is the only forum that I'm hearing about it. And I'm wondering when people can actually hear statements from leadership, even though it's not your role to talk for the sheriff's department, how can we hear more that these conversations are happening? And that as individuals and as Commissioners, you're taking a stance to stand in solidarity.
But...
Well...
Mr. Stanley, you want to...
Sure.
Commissioners, that's really never, um, what do you call, um, I'm, for social media, I might make myself.
The Commissioners are the executive of the county, but they're not in charge of law enforcement, not in charge of training law enforcement, and they're not in charge of policies and procedures for law enforcement.
And I think that's very appropriate, but I would like to know that our Commissioners, as leaders in our community, are taking a stance to represent the populace.
And they have, and then they came out last meeting and...
Yeah, we opened with going to their bay, so...
Mr. Stanley?
Sure.
The Sheriff's Department, we'd be more than happy to talk to you, anybody else in the public that didn't want to speak with us. Sheriff Skinner has an open door, I have an open door right next to him. Anybody that wants to call and come in and talk, we'll be more than happy to talk to them. We've had people on social media already try to contact us. We've invited them. We're not going to play this keyboard warrior thing. We're not going to do it over social media, we're not going to do it over Messenger, we're not going to do any of that. If you want to talk face to face, we'd be more than happy to speak with you. And the ones that have contacted us, and we've invited them in to try to speak with them and explain what we're doing, they've neglected to come in and talk to us. We welcome you. All you got to do is contact us, we have, get on the website, email us, whatever. Be more than happy to speak with you.
Absolutely, and I really appreciate that transparency, I think that's very important. I just think it's also important to recognize that social media and the landscape in which people are communicating has been changing a lot over the last couple of years. And it doesn't need to be a nasty, you know, keyboard fight, it doesn't need to be petty, it doesn't need to be trending or anything. But I do think that is the medium in which most of people have the best access to hear what leaders are doing. I think it is important to have statements so that people who may not have the accessibility or may not have the time to come in and have individual conversations can still understand what's happening at a legislative level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, motion recessed, till move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second roll call, please. Did y'all have email?
Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Yes. Recession.